Okay, good morning. And I'll call to order the September 5th, 2023 Regular Meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. We're meeting on Tuesday because yesterday was a holiday, Labor Day. So, our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance. And Pastor Josh Fraser couldn't be here this morning because of the change of date. And so we'll have just a moment of silence after we do our pledge. So if everyone, please stand for the pledge. Okay, we do not have a public hearing today. We have, our next order of business will be our public comment session. And I have one person has signed up to speak, and it's Ellen Pitt. Is Ellen here? There you are. Okay. Good morning, Ellen. How are you?
Good morning. I'm fine. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm just here to give you an update and to tell you that it's time for Haywood County to take a bow, twice. We've had a lot of success through our Regional DWI Task Force with two endeavors. One of those was getting a magistrate education bill passed. That was a 98% successful endeavor. Of the 518 magistrates in North Carolina, only 14 are out of compliance with the mandatory education, and that's because they were newly hired or some other valid reason. So, that's something we can be proud of. The other thing is, we talked to you before about cam bracelets, continuous alcohol monitoring. That's another stellar success. Haywood County led the way throughout the one-year pretrial cam bracelet project, and more than likely has saved over $129,600 in incarceration costs. Even if each Haywood County defendant had only spent 72 hours in jail, there's no way to estimate the number of lives that might have been saved, including the lives of the participants. As of August 17, 2023, 24 of the 47 individuals assigned to cam bracelets, that's 51%, were from Haywood County, and there is not a single violation from here. In fact, the project has had a 98% success rate throughout the 7th County 43rd Prosecutor District. I asked you before about funding because we know the funding for this project ends September 30th. Madison County, and you all met Colonel Honeycutt, has already set aside $5,000 for pretrial cam bracelets if that should be needed. In Haywood County, the cost of the 24 defendants who wore the cams for 90 days is about $27,000. The impact has been priceless. I'm going to show you a picture that I want you to keep in your mind while you think about this. This is a Haywood County boy. The guy that killed him had been arrested seven days before that with a .22 blood alcohol and two kids in the car. If, back in 2004, we had had this technology in the law, this boy would not be dead today. And so, we have an opportunity to do something, and I think we should do it. So, I have some news coverage of our successful projects from newspapers, and I guess y'all may have seen the television coverage. It's not every day that you can have two back-to-back projects be 98% successful. And so, thank you. I have a little something for you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Well, thank you for all your work. I love to hear savings, so that's great. I know the taxpayers do, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session, and I'll go to constituent concerns. I do want to announce that we'll be holding a public hearing during the Regular Meeting on September 18th, 2023, to receive comments on proposed amendments to the County of Haywood, North Carolina Code of Ordinances to the following ordinances. So, Chapter 92, Fire Prevention; Chapter 98, Child Safety Zones; Chapter 117, Ambulance Service Regulations and Ambulance Operator Franchise; Chapter 115, Building Regulations; Chapter 156, Farmland Preservation. Notice of the Public Hearing will run in the legal notices in the Mountaineer this Wednesday, September 6th, and next Wednesday, September 13th, and will be posted on the county website. Proposed revisions will be posted on the county website, and hard copies will be available during business hours here in the administration office and at the main branch of the Haywood County Library, starting this Wednesday. So that'll be next, at our next meeting. Okay. Does anyone have any other constituent concerns that they want to... Go ahead, Terry.
Yes, sir. I know it's probably a little bit out of our reach, but yesterday I met with a group of people that were homeowner association presidents and stuff on the Ball Creek area of Haywood County up there. And I went down there, and they asked me if I'd go down there and ride up to the top of the mountain at Ball Creek. And from the time I cut off Ball Creek, till I got to the gate up there at Mount Snob, 142 vehicles passed me coming out. And there were that many or more going in because when I got to the top, I couldn't turn around. And these people that live up there, they can't... Rodney Smith was going to cut corn yesterday after the meeting. He came out of the cornfield right there to turn on the Ball Creek Road, and went on 40 vehicles before he could get out. I know that's probably something that we can't control because they do have a rightway in there, but it's a safety concern. And I stopped and was talking to a friend of mine, it was a highway patrolman as I was coming down, he was on his lawnmower. We were standing there talking, and a car stopped and goes over into the cornfield, right on the side of the road, and picks her about 10 ears of corn. And Luke told her, said, "That's not sweet corn, that's cattle corn." And she said, "Well, it'd be okay," and put it in her car, just like it wasn't nothing. And one lady, on the day before yesterday, they said the traffic was a lot worse than it was yesterday. One lady stopped and threw some baby diapers out in this lady's yard. Well, this lady got a little bit upset, and she grabbed her baby diapers and followed her way up top of the mountain, threw them back in her car. But anyway, that, my concern is that that's, it's not only just a safety concern, but these people have to live there, you know? And when they, when they have to deal with this every day, it makes it where they can't carry on their farming, they can't carry on their normal activities, come out and go to work, or whatever they need to do. And I just wonder if there's anything we could possibly do to help these people out. Because I, when I've been getting these emails, I thought, you know, it's probably pretty bad. But once I went up there, if you just ride up there one time, you'll see how bad it really is. Because at the top, where you go, before you go up Quail Cove, and before you go across the top, the roads broke off, and the roads, they've destroyed the road. And it's, a bus is coming in and out, too. They weren't going in on Buncombe County's side, but now they've had it run into a rightway problem over there, so now it's all on Haywood. We don't, I couldn't see one way we can benefit from all that traffic coming from... They said there was 70,000 last year went through there. And the one of the guys that was at the meeting was, had worked for this guy for 11 years. And he's telling me all kinds of stuff, which I mean, that's nothing to us, some of the stuff that he was telling me. But, but it's, it is definitely a safety concern. If there's any way, any of y'all could ride up there and just look at it, and just see for yourself how bad it really is. Because that's our Haywood residents that's paying taxes and stuff. And if there's any way we can help them, I'd like to help them, if at all possible. Because it was way beyond what I thought it was when I went up there. And maybe we'll meet with some state people, or senators, legislators, or something, see if we could get them a little help.
Have you anything else?
Just a comment, I think, Chairman. We had our employee appreciation meal last week, and I'd just like to publicly say that we appreciate you guys for all you do, all of you. We know you have a tough job, and we appreciate all you do. So, thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Rogers' statements. It's a great event. You know, yesterday, we celebrated Labor Day in the county, and it's the first time ever, probably in 115 years, that we haven't had our largest employer at the paper mill in Canton. So, you know, it was kind of a nostalgic day for me. I spent my day, as I usually do, for my whole life. I was in a hayfield. My whole life, I've either been drugged... (inaudible) ...up, I had a drug problem. I got drugged to the tobacco field, drugged to the hayfield, or drugged to church. And being drugged to church paid off more than the other two. It's all, it's all been very productive. But I appreciate all the workers, appreciate the people that work for our county, and everybody that puts 40 hours a week in just to send it on down the line. So, it's a great holiday, blue collar holiday in America, and appreciate all of our workers.
Same, same thing. We had a really good time. I was tickled that everybody had done such a good job as employees of the county, and we just got to be a part of it. It was a good meal, we had good entertainment, got to fellowship with a lot of people that we maybe don't get to see that way, and so it was just a really nice time. I appreciate what we do as a county, for our citizens, and working together. Working with y'all has been a great privilege for me.
I couldn't be there because we were on family vacation, and I appreciate Miranda letting everybody know that. We, actually, Thursday was when we got our hurricane there. So, there's a lot of heavy rain and wind, but we, it was, it was okay. But I do want to say to our employees, and I would have said this, that our employees make us, as commissioners, look good all the time. And I appreciate everybody's work and their sacrifices that they make for our county. And we're truly blessed to have the employees that we do, and I really appreciate them. And I had seen someone at Truckers Supply yesterday that had been there, and he was thanking to me, or thanking the staff, and I know Christie Fox, our HR director, put a lot of that together, I think. And we used to do a breakfast every, every year, right before Christmas. It was like, seems like it was around Thanksgiving, or right after. I think it was the first Friday, maybe after Thanksgiving, the week, Thanksgiving weekend. And we always recognize our employees, and we quit doing that in 2009 because of the downturn in the economy, and we just cut everything. And so I'm glad that we're bringing something back. And this seems, seems like a good, a good fit, where we can honor our employees. We always honored our longtime employees at that meeting and recognized them. So, but I just want to say that our employees make us, as commissioners, look good. I know many times I'll get calls from our staff, and they're always very attentive to what people need, and I really appreciate that, their hard work. As far as the issue that you were talking about, Terry, I've been up there, I was up there about a year ago. I didn't really see what, what you were saying. I'm sure maybe that happened, or that's going on. But I think that is, we've had, Buncombe County has looked into that. Their facility is in Buncombe County, because the ridge line is the county line. They go through Haywood County to get to that. And I guess there are complaints about sanitation and some other things, but Buncombe County has looked into this. You want to just comment on that?
I guess six, eight weeks ago, this, this came up, and I talked through email with the manager of Buncombe County. But Commissioner Ramey took some video yesterday and sent it to me. So I'm going to forward that along to Buncombe, because maybe something wasn't seen at their visit a month ago, but yesterday, there's more going on. So I'm going to pass that information along to make sure they're in compliance with, especially environmental health.
Right.
A lot of these people that, that were at that meeting yesterday live across the top. They live in there, but they're getting our services from Haywood County.
Right, yeah.
So, that's, that's where my concern is, that it's our, our people that's suffering for this. Because, and I mean, I understand that there's, it's, it's an issue bigger than what we can deal with. But it's also, once they cut the traffic out from coming in from Buncombe County's side, they threw it on us, and now all the traffic is coming in from our side. They got rid of the problem on their side, but sent it to us.
Okay, yeah.
Services you're talking about, Mr. Ramey, do they, Buncombe County, do they compensate our Iron Duff, Crabtree Iron Duff Fire Department with some fire taxes?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can look into that. I'm not sure.
What, they were telling me they got EMS, and Sheriff's Department, and Fire Department from stuff from Haywood County.
I think they do, but just check on that if you don't mind. I looked into that a little while, a while back, and I may be mistaken, but I do believe they do pay into Crabtree Iron Duff Fire Department and, you know, EMS, if there's a way that, you know, we are providing those services, they probably need to ante up a little, if not.
I don't know if they can, really.
I believe that's a private, that's a private deal over there.
Private road.
One man owns all of it.
Yeah, it's a private road. It goes into that. It's really a private matter. We, other than, other than the...
The, the public health issues.
The public health issues, there's, yeah. I don't, I don't know what we can do with that. You know, the problem is for EMS, maybe you could say, if, how many EMS calls we have? You know, how many times has EMS had to go up there, maybe, Brian? Maybe we could look at that. I know the, the Fire Department, it's just closer for us to get there, instead of having to go, like Sandy mush, I guess is what that is over there, or Lester. For them to come all the way around, their fire departments, I don't know how long that would take. So that's, I guess we do that as, as a, yeah, just, you know, what'd you say? Courtesy, yeah, to where, but...
Yesterday, as I came out, it was wrecked in front of the truck stop, two hit, about head-on. I came up toward the fire grounds, and right there, we come out above Richland Creek, two hit head-on, I mean demolished four vehicles bad. And that's how much traffic was going up and down through there yesterday. At that, just that one time, as I was coming out, there's two accidents within that, that distance right there.
Yeah, Labor Day weekend, there was a lot of, Monday was a big travel day. Okay. Okay. So, if you'll check on that, Brian, I appreciate it. Okay, so our next order of business is Administrative Agency Reports and Presentations. We have our WIC Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children report. We have our WIC Supervisor, Mary Jane Johnson, to report on that. I also want to, also report, as you're coming up, that we, we want to mention that our Health Director, Sarah Banks, has reported that the WIC program brought in over $1 million in benefits to our community, and that there may be people eligible for the program who do not realize it. And I guess you're going to go over that, Mary Jane.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. So we want everybody to be attentive of this, because if these benefits, if they're there for you, you can take advantage of them. So, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and thanks for having me. Again, my name is Mary Jane Johnson. I'm the Haywood County WIC Supervisor, have been in this role for about three years now. And I'm excited to share with y'all what we do on the day-to-day, and how we're benefiting the Haywood County communities. All right, let's see. So, I'm just going to present today on our services and the impact that it does make. We're going to talk about the Breastfeeding Award of Excellence, as well as impacts of breastfeeding and breastfeeding-friendly communities. And then I will end with how to sign up for WIC, just to make sure if families want to, they know that they're eligible, and how they can get connected to us. All right. So, we provide four main services to the community. And right now, we're serving approximately 1,300 folks. We provide nutrition education. So, I'm a registered dietitian. We have other nutrition professionals on staff. And we provide evidence-based recommendations for infant, child, and prenatal and postpartum nutrition. We also provide a healthy food package, and that's where that revenue is coming from. It's a very specific food package that focuses on nutrient-dense foods, such as whole grains, fruits and vegetables, eggs, beans, peanut butter, things like that. And then we also do a lot of breastfeeding support. Breastfeeding is a primary focus for WIC, and all WIC staff, all, anybody who comes in contact with a WIC participant must undergo breastfeeding training. In addition, we have a breastfeeding peer counselor on staff. Her name is Claudia Garcia, and she is hired specifically to support breastfeeding families. And then we do a lot of referrals. So, we're constantly referring to food stamps, Medicaid, dental services, you name it. We're connecting our participants to those services that might benefit their family. And WIC really does work. It's been around since the 70s, and we're continuously getting funded by the federal government because of the outcomes. So, just, you know, not an all-inclusive list here, but due to WIC, we're seeing a decrease in premature births, decrease in low and very low birth weights, reduced fetal and infant deaths, reduced iron deficiency anemia, more access to prenatal care earlier, increased consumption of key nutrients, and increased immunization rates. We're continuously screening immunization for our participants, improved diet quality, increased access to routine healthcare. We're constantly checking in, seeing if families are seeing their providers. And then we also see increased breastfeeding initiation and duration for those participating in the WIC And again, we're going to talk a little more about breastfeeding. So, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends exclusive breastfeeding for the first six months of life. And recently, the AAP changed the recommendation for at least one year to at least two years of breastfeeding. So, there's really no end to the recommendation for breastfeeding, and there's so many health impacts for both the family and for the community. Breastfeeding is not easy, and that is why we have so many resources to help support our families. And formula is a necessary resource for some families, but WIC likes to stay very mindful of the fact that formula marketing is extremely aggressive and deceiving as well. The nutrition quality of formula will never match breast milk, and we just like to make sure that all WIC participants are making an informed decision on how to feed their baby. You know, if they choose formula, absolutely, we will support that, and we will provide formula on the WIC food package. But we just want to make sure that everyone knows the difference. Listed here, you will see the impacts for the breastfeeding parent, the infant who is breastfeeding, and businesses who support breastfeeding. So, not all-inclusive again, but the breastfeeding parent is going to have a lower chance of high blood pressure, type 2 diabetes, ovarian cancer, and breast cancer throughout their life if they breastfeed. We see infants who breastfeed have lower risk of asthma, diabetes, lower respiratory disease, ear infections, sudden infant death syndrome, gastrointestinal infections, and necrotizing enterocolitis. So many health benefits are coming from breastfeeding. And that is why businesses are seeing a three-to-one return on investment when they are supporting breastfeeding families. There are lower healthcare costs when families are breastfeeding, reduced rates of absenteeism for employees. If baby is sick less, if mom is sick less, they're going to be at work more. We see lower turnover rates and improved productivity and loyalty when businesses are supporting breastfeeding families. So, can't have a conversation with WIC without having a good plug for breastfeeding. Hope you all learned something today for that. Moving to our USDA Breastfeeding Award of Excellence, this is something that the Haywood County WIC Department recently received. And it basically is recognizing WIC programs that are staffing a breastfeeding peer counselor. They're following WIC policy and local policy regarding breastfeeding. And they're engaging with the community to promote, normalize, and encourage breastfeeding for families. And we have absolutely been doing that, and we have been doing a very good job of it. So, we're thrilled that we received this award, and happy to celebrate that with you today. All right. And then, the enrollment process in WIC is pretty streamlined. It is straightforward. You just have to be categorically eligible. So, a child under the age of five, or a prenatal or postpartum person, you have to be income-eligible. Being income-eligible for WIC, primarily, we're seeing adjunct income eligibility through those on Medicaid, food stamps, and work first. If you're on Medicaid, food stamps, or work first, you are automatically income-eligible for WIC. You must live in North Carolina, and you must have a nutrition risk. Pretty much all of us have a nutrition risk, so that's not usually a barrier. No one's perfect.
What is the income level?
It is 185% below the poverty guideline.
What number is that, do you know?
What was that?
What's the number, like?
Oh, it depends on the family size.
Okay.
Yeah, so it differs with how many people are living in the household. If you want those numbers, I can absolutely send them.
That's okay. I was just, I'm just trying to get the word out for people, so...
Yeah. And I would say nine of 10 of our participants are enrolled in Medicaid, so we rarely have to do a full income screening. Yep. And then how to connect to our program. So, this, number one listed here is a link to a referral online. Basically, that participant just has to put their name and phone number. The WIC office gets a direct email, and we reach out to them. We have this link connected to QR codes in many pediatric offices, where we're getting definite uptick in referrals, where, you know, participants in that pediatric office just have to scan the QR code, type their name and phone number, and we're getting that information. So, this link is, we try to send to as many partners as we can. You can always call us directly. We're extremely responsive. You can drop by the office. We're there 40 hours a week, and we love seeing new families come to the office. And then we are also working on being more efficient with our NC 360 referral system. And partners can use this. They can send their referrals to us, and we're starting to use that more as well. So, just a few ways to get connected to WIC there. And that's all I have for y'all today. Any questions for me?
Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind, just for the folks listening, can you give the address of where your office is located?
Yes, we're at the Health Department, so we're 157 Paragon Parkway, Suite 800, in Clyde, North Carolina.
Any questions?
All right.
Mary Jane? Okay, next order of business is discussion adjustment of the agenda. I do not have anything. Does any other commissioner have anything they want to present? The next order of business will be a consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the four items on the consent agenda? Okay, here and then, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. And the first item is to request approval of a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Department, $26,000 to appropriate drug forfeiture funds collected and unspent as of fiscal year end 2023. Funds will be for the purchase of an additional K-9 and kennels supplies for two new K-9s. We have our Finance Director, Christian Owen, to speak to that. Hey, Christian.
Good morning. Yes, we're asking to appropriate some of the drug forfeiture funds that were collected last fiscal year. They will use these funds to purchase a K-9, and then construct kennels and the cage kennels that goes in the cars for the K-9 officers.
Sheriff, did you want to comment on any of that?
No, I'd just like to emphasize how the K-9 program is, how successful it's been. And we appreciate your approval of this request. So, good, thanks.
Are we adding K-9s, or are we...
We're adding a total of two, so...
Brings our total to...
I don't mean, we only six.
Hey, Bill. Hey, Bill, come on up. Sorry. Hey, nobody can hear you at home. Hey, nobody can hear you at home.
At this point, it'll be a total of six. This also will provide training for our new handlers. We just had a process for new K-9 officers, and the one that we selected needs to go to training, and we need to have him train with the dog. And so, again, this will also cover the cages, all the things that are necessary to keep these dogs in good shape, so. And they're, they add great value to us, and I would expect that these dogs will actually pay for themselves within the year.
Drug forfeiture fund, sounds like.
Yes, sir.
So is that, so primarily, what do they look for, drugs?
Yes, sir. So there are several qualifications that a K-9 can have. And so we have apprehension dogs, and we have drug dogs, which are our two main things. Apprehension dogs, sometimes you can get them dual-certified. Apprehension dogs are as important as drug dogs because they actually protect the deputy's life. The dog will go in, being a loyal dog, as most of them are, and they will accept the danger on behalf of the deputy to apprehend a, perhaps a fleeing criminal or someone that's potentially armed, and they do a great service for us. So, of course, to get to that point, there's extensive training. They have to be certified through AKC and a number of other law enforcement certifications before we can actually deploy the dog into that role. So it's also a very high liability area, which is why it's expensive to train them and make sure that we have constant focus on keeping that training up to date. We also pay a little extra for our deputies to spend the extra time training the dogs on their own time as well. So there are a lot of factors involved with this to keep them where they need to be.
Curious, is apprehensive, the dog that apprehends a suspect and a drug dog, are they a different breed or are they the same breed of dog?
Well, it all depends. You know, these dogs are selected at an early age based on what they, they're, they seem to be best at, for lack of a better term, and your breeders and the folks that do this for a living can look at a dog and essentially tell you, based on its personality and how it performs as a puppy, what it may be most suited for. And as they mature and go through training, a lot of them are weeded out. Some of them actually become pets for folks that are not suitable for, for law enforcement, but it's the ones that, that are, that, that have the most trainability and seem to have the, the apprehensive ability to, to learn and accept training.
So they are different breeds. I know the bloodhound's got some great, some great sensory.
Right, right. So Belgian Malinois and German Shepherds are, are the two. Belgians are most famous for being apprehension dogs, and as you may know, the Chief Trantham has a dog as well. One of the, the things he asked me when I asked him to be chief was as long as he could keep his dog, and, and they have a very close relationship. And the chief still takes Kilo out and has done some apprehensive, or excuse me, some, some drug detention work, and, and so the chief is still actively involved in, in K-9 stuff, and he really oversees that, that program. So we, we have a lot of, of, our dogs are good. I'll just put it to you that way. So, for what they're certified to do. And they, they perform a great service for this county, and certainly we would appreciate this, and again, I think in a year's time, you're going to see this and more come back.
That's good.
Interesting note, we, we seem to be having less traffickers come through the county. Our messaging and our efforts seem to be working. I'm not declaring victory in the world of drugs by any stretch, but we're seeing a noticeable difference in the folks that think they're going to bring dope into Haywood County and sell it here or traffic large amounts, which is a, a great return on investment so far. And our deputies and the folks doing that work very much appreciate your support and the support that the residents of this county have given towards that effort. And we're starting to see some benefits, and we'll continue to see those benefits. There's still plenty of work to be done, but that's, for nine, 10 months into a new administration, we're, I'm very pleased with that result, so.
Great, that's great.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there, is there any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, then next is a request approval of a budget amendment from the sheriff for $4,000 to accept and appropriate Sheriff's Department donations collected in fiscal year 23 and unspent. Go ahead, Christian.
Yes, this won't be paired with the drug forfeiture funds to, to cover those costs of the K-9s. And I would also like to say, I have been here for five years, and, and the amount we're collecting in drug forfeiture funds are the highest that I've seen since I've been here. So the efforts are working.
Okay. Okay, so any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve number two?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Number three is a, you're, you're, you're up all four times.
I am the entire regular agenda.
Request approval of a budget amendment for Health and Human Services Administration for $251,974 to recognize the actual revenue to carry over from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024 and adjust the expense accordingly to match.
Okay, this is the budget amendment that we do each year. Basically, there is a projection for the HHSA revenue that comes along in January. Once the fiscal year is closed, we have to ju, adjust it to actual from that projection. So this is basically just to carry those funds over into this fiscal year as they will be received in this fiscal year and the associated expenses.
Questions for Christian on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Christian, last one. Request approval of a budget amendment for extension, $58,570 to carry forward extension program revenues received and unspent in fiscal year 2023.
This is also an annual adjustment budget amendment that we do. This is for the, all the extension programs, the sales, donations, et cetera, that they received last year and were unable to spend in that program year gets carried over.
Questions on that? Okay, I'll entertain that. A motion for number four.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. You did well. Okay, our next order of business will be appointments, and number one is to request approval of an appointment of Jean, Jeannie, I'm sorry, Jeannie Gonzalez to a three-year term as an ETJ alternate representative on the Clyde Planning Board.
The only thing I'd add, Mr. Chairman, is that the Clyde Board of Alderman approved this at their August 10 meeting, and Ms. Gonzalez has experience as a geospatial analyst for a land use firm, and they think those skills would, would help the planning board.
Okay, yeah, for sure. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Number two is a request approval appointment of Joshua Justice to the Smoky Mountain Event Center Board, fulfilling an unexpired term through March 7, 2025. Is, that's pretty well straightforward, so.
Pretty straightforward, yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, item number three is to request approval to appoint Chad McMahon to the General Sanitary District Board to fulfill an unexpired term through November 2026. And we have Jim Francis here this morning, who is the chair of their board, right, Jim? And he's going, I, I asked Jim to explain the process that they use to, to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Enslie, and other members of the county commissioners, as well as Mr. Molehead and Mr. Queen, for this opportunity. I'm here for the reason. Unfortunately, we have lost a member of the sanitary district in Dan McCracken, and I would like to just take a few moments to publicly tell you how much we appreciated Dan, what a terrible loss it is to our district and to Haywood County as well. Most of all of you knew Dan. He served as the supervisor for the Haywood County Department of Sanitation for some 40 years. During that time, Dan and I had some heated discussions about septic tanks and so forth and so on, but through the years, we, we remained friends, and he, as we have served together on the sanitary district, he has proven invaluable to the district for the knowledge that he brought concerning the health for the people of Haywood County along sanitation lines. It, it is really a loss for us again, and for the people of Haywood County. He contributed a tremendous amount to the welfare and the health of, of the people in the area. The board, we're, we're a sort of a different animal. We're appointed by the state legislature. We report directly to the state treasurer. They, the treasurer gives us our direction as far as how we spend our money, where we can invest it. They tell us how our annual audit is to be set up, and we're actually, we report directly to them as far as financial conditions go. Of course, the North Carolina Department of Environment Dean is our primary source that gives us direction as to water quality, water pressures, where the lines, who belongs to the, who the lines belong to. And like I said, we, we, we follow the rules and regulations that they establish for us. So our association with the county commissioners, and as stated in the state statutes, is that the county commissioners actually place a vacancy on the board, so that's the reason we're here. We have, have spoken with a gentleman who we think would fit our district very well, would be, would work well with our other board members and with our staff to provide quality water services to those that are in our district and some that are outside the district, of course. And, and this gentleman is Mr. Chad McMahon. We have invited him to the office, had an interview with him, spoke with him. He lives in the same area that Dan had represented, represented, and we, as the board members, feel like he would make a very good replacement for Mr. McCracken. So I would respectfully request the board to appoint him as our new member to the General Sanitary District. Thank you.
Any questions? Did you want to say anything? Okay. Okay, okay.
Francis, how many board members do you have?
Sure.
How many board members do you have?
Five.
Five. I appreciate the comments you had about Mr. McCracken, and they were spot on. Served this county well for so many years. And Mr. McMahon, we approve him, which I feel we will. He's got some big shoes to fill, but I know with your leadership and experience, he'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, yeah, and I'll, I'll echo what Tommy said about Dan. Just a, a great member. He, I was, I was telling Jim that we, I remember Dan, so when, when you, septic tanks in Haywood County, I guess the state started requiring in, in the mid-'70s that they, you get permits to put in a septic tank. Before that, you, you just put one in and you just put it in. And so there wasn't any oversight and, and things like that to make sure it got put in in good soil and everything. You just had to kind of rely on your contractor. But anyway, I know Dan basically was on the board before, before that, when you had systems and, and basically what you would do, there are some records of permits. They weren't required to, but the Health Department would go out and do that, so. But he was there before and during, and then after the law passed to see all, all that take place. So as far as sanitation in Haywood County, he had a great effort in doing that. And, you know, a lot of people would run their septic lines into the creeks. And so I know there was a time whenever we went through the county and had to observe those creeks and, and find those and make sure people weren't doing, doing that anymore, so. But Dan was there for all that, so he, he definitely.
A lot of jokes went around about that.
Yeah, yeah, he definitely did a lot of, a, a lot of work in making sure the county got up where we needed to be sanitation-wise, and so our streams are a lot better for it and everything, so. So I'll entertain a motion. We approve this number three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, next order of business is a closed session, and we have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-381 dot 11A6 to address personnel matters. And we'll be, so I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session.
Make a motion. We go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. Have we've returned from closed session. Does any commissioner have any other further business for the board to consider? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe.